Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Happy summer. I call to order this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is June 12, 2018, and the time is 5:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Board Member Kravitz, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for being here. We will have a roll call, starting from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Pam Kirby.
Kim Hartman.
Barbara Pearlberg. All board members are present, and we do have a quorum. We will start with our first agenda item three, approval of agenda. Are there any requests to amend the agenda? I mean, Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. I'd like to request that we amend the agenda to take item Z, as in zebra, pull it off a consent, and furthermore, move it before superintendent's comments so that we may go into executive session to discuss while our outside counsel is present, and then she can be released after that discussion.
Okay. So at this time, you'd like to make a motion that we convene in executive session for discussion of consent agenda item 7Z, approve the purchase of custodial services issued through one government procurement alliance, one GPA contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Beckham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We will convene in executive session. Time is 5:40, and we are reconvened in our regular meeting. We'll move on quickly, and I will note that we will be removing consent agenda item 7Z, approve the purchase of custodial services issued through one government procurement alliance contract. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz. A second? Thank you, Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We'll move directly on to our agenda item four and call upon Dr. Krieger to present superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Pearlberg and members of the board. Since school is out, we have no official celebration to share with you today. However, there are a few noteworthy items that I would like to pass along. First, some information about our just graduated class of 2018. It was a combined group of 1,834 students from our five high schools, including 13 students who graduated a year ahead of schedule. All told, the class of 2018 earned nearly $63.7 million in college academic and athletic scholarships. And as you know, from our last meeting, four of our seniors received appointments to the nation's military academies, and we met three of them here last month. We had our first ever Flynn Scholar from Coronado High School in this graduating class. We learned that last week that SUSD has three more National Merit Scholarship winners. National Merit Association, Scholarship Association sends them out periodically and not all in one batch. Kate Hostel from Chaparral and Logan Farrington received scholarships from Arizona State University. Kate intends to go to law school. Logan is interested in pursuing a degree in chemical engineering. And Argon Stern from Arcadia has received a scholarship to study at Grinnell College in Iowa. Argon foresees a career for himself in science research. Congratulations to these three from the class of 2018. Other accolades continue to come in as well. At the recent ASU Gammage High School Musical Theater Awards, Desert Mountains production of Spamalot and Chaparral's review of Singin' in the Rain were among the 10 nominees for Best Musical ultimately won by Chaparral. Cole Newberg was named Best Dancer from that same production. Zach Isaac from Desert Mountain was named Best Supporting Male for Spamalot. The aforementioned National Merit Scholar Logan Farrington won the Best Lighting Design Award for Spamalot. So he's going into chemical engineering but has a flair for electricity as well. Desert Mountain High's Alex Weather won the award for Best Costumes Design. SUSD has exceptional high school fine arts programs. We know that, and now others know that also. Moving to athletics, this past Sunday, three of our high school athletes were named Arizona Central Athletes of the Year. You've met each of them during the school year. There are Matt LeBlanc from Chaparral High School, who was named Boy Swimmer of the Year; Josie Frazier from Desert Mountain, who was here just last month to celebrate her part of the tennis state doubles title; and she was named Arizona Central Girls Tennis Player of the Year; and Tripp Dillon from Chaparral won the state tennis singles title in April, and he was named the Boys Tennis Player of the Year. Congratulations to these student athletes. Lastly, I'm very happy to report an accolade that will be bestowed soon upon a former colleague of mine at Chaparral High School, softball coach Jeff Oskerson, a longtime PE teacher both at Chaparral early on and then at Kokopa. By public vote, Coach Oskerson has been elected to the Arizona Sports Hall of Fame. His teams won five state titles during his 22-year tenure at Chaparral, which finished in 2003, he finished in 2003 with an overall record of 450 wins, 122 losses, and three ties. While Jeff is probably best known for his years at Chaparral, he played high school baseball at Sawarol and college ball at Mesa Community College and ASU, where he was part of the Sun Devils' national championship teams of 1973 and '74. What I know personally about Jeff also is after that year, 1974, when they won the national championship, he was drafted and offered a contract to play professional baseball, and he turned it down to be a teacher. He also served as a teacher and athletic director in the district and played a pivotal role in establishing SUSD's middle school athletics program. Jeff will formally be inducted into the Arizona Sports Hall of Fame later this year. So congratulations, Coach Oskerson.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to our first information discussion item, 5A, Student Code of Conduct, 2018-19 school year. Dr. Sakos?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Krieger and Mrs. Como. Tonight's agenda item is an informational item regarding the SUSD Code of Conduct, and tonight I will share with you the purpose behind the Code of Conduct, take a look at some of the data that we look at when reviewing the Code of Conduct and looking at student assistance programs for implementation, share with you some of the recommended changes from the Code of Conduct, and talk about those next steps in terms of addressing student behaviors. First and foremost, it's important to know that the primary purpose of the Code of Conduct is to ensure that we align the code with local, state, and federal law, and I do that in conjunction with the legal department as well as the Code of Conduct Committee. And this does include looking at our board policies as well. We also take a look at data to inform not only what are our consequences within the Code of Conduct, but to inform the student assistance programs that students need in order to be preventative and to decrease those at-risk behaviors. You can see here some guiding principles, and it's most important to note that we really want to ensure consistent application of the Code of Conduct amongst all of our schools and provide for a positive school environment on all of our campuses. Beginning to look at some data, I just put a couple of data slides in here. Every year, we take a look at what our top referrals are in our schools' overall K-12. And these are our top, what we call ODRs, our Office Discipline Referrals. For the last several years, the top Office Discipline Referrals has been in defiance and disrespect, disruption, and minor aggressive act. So you can see some trend data here over the last few years. We are seeing a decrease in our top referrals, which is one indicator that our student assistance programs are effective, and also our schools are doing a phenomenal job with establishing those expectations, those behavioral expectations. And you heard when we did the reports from our schools, a lot of them still really implementing PBIS with fidelity. The next slide, however, continues to concern us. ATOD, I apologize I didn't put this in there, is alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. This is an area that we are seeing a steady incline in, in our Office Discipline Referrals and also our Arizona Youth Survey data that I'll talk about in just a moment. And so you can see here, this is a raw number of the number of referrals across the school district. This is typically coming out of our middle schools and high schools, handful of elementary violations, and we're seeing an increase naturally in vapes. And with the vaping, it's typically tobacco, but we're also seeing students putting other substances, other oils, in the vapes, and so we are seeing that increase. This is an area of continued focus for us. We do have, we're going in our second or third year of a grant, which is the High School Health and Wellness Grant with the governor's office for three of our schools, Chaparral, Desert Mountain High School, and Arcadia, in which we were able to put a prevention coach/social worker in those schools. And what we want to do, and you'll see this in next steps, is go ahead and expand some of what we're doing to our other schools as well in terms of that education, because we're starting to monitor to see that education piece as well as the impact that it's having on the student body. When we look at our discipline data, whether it is from our Office Discipline Referrals or what I spoke about earlier, Arizona Youth Survey data, which we're waiting for, the 2018, any time now, we look at student assistance programs to implement in our schools. Our student assistance programs currently are provided by Jewish Family Children Services, JFCS, and they were our select vendor when we went out for RFP, Request for Proposal, four years ago, and we're getting ready to go out again and once we refine our scope of services. But these are the top student assistance programs that we have in our schools. This is primarily our middle school delivery of services with JFCS, and then we do have some trained social workers that also implement student assistance programs. Specific to our vendor, Jewish Family Support Services, we're able to offer those services because of monies that are provided from the city of Scottsdale. And so every year, the city of Scottsdale gives us dollars specific for prevention and intervention, and again, as I said, our select vendor was JFCS. And so part of continuing to get those dollars is providing quarterly and yearly reports to the city of Scottsdale to show them program effectiveness. And that, again, is how we get many of our grants, is to say, we're not just taking money and implementing it, you know, freely. We're putting our money into research-based programs, and we're looking at measurements of effectiveness to make sure that we're seeing an impact. So when you look at the, I just put up a little bit of the data from our end-of-year report, but participant outcome data, you can see here the percentages of positive impact from our group participants, which would be the students, and also our families. And so we collect that pre- and post-data, and then most importantly, is that impact from our teachers, because we really want to know, we're pulling students from the teacher's classroom in order to implement the student assistance programs, and so we want to know what is the impact. And so these were very favorable this year to see in the 90% how teachers are reporting that they are seeing a change in behavior in our students that are participating in our programs. And that is very important to us, because again, we're pulling students from the classroom, and the, you know, the pros of that needs to outweigh the cons of them missing that bit of instruction. Specific changes to the Code of Conduct, we are awaiting some guidance from the Arizona Department of Education, what is called their EX-1, and it's their excused absent guidelines. And this is really thrusted by the Finance Department as to what absences will be accepted as excused absences versus unexcused absences. And so that will shape our attendance regulation within our Code of Conduct and perhaps later on, shape some of our attendance board policies and board policy regulations. And I'm working very closely with Ms. Marshall so that we can monitor that. Some of the other changes, and hopefully the red line was very helpful for you to see in advance, is to our student release form. Parents have an opportunity to opt out of certain things each year, to have their photo in the yearbook, out of military information. And so what we did this year is added that language for participation in our student assistance programs. The majority of our students refer to our student assistance programs, their families give permission, it's just another form they have to sign. And so by getting it, that permission in advance, of course, we're going to call parents and say, you know, Johnny has been referred to participate, you've already given consent, but we don't have to waste that time getting that form. And then we also added language to allow a single submission for exemptions. And so every year, some of our, especially our high school, families say to us, why am I, why do I get the same form every single year? So what we did is put the language in there that they only have to resubmit if there are changes to the student release form. There was also some language added specific to AIA, to define additional AIA-governed activities such as ROTC, Spirit Line. We added some language about food delivery, only food delivery, maybe deliver to the front office via parent. Uber Eats over the fence is something we do not like to see, and so that seemed to be a fad this year, but for obvious safety reasons, we need all food channeled through the front office by a parent. And then lastly, we did some other clarifying language and alignment of consequences, and frankly, some of those were just minor errors from the year prior. So we cleaned that up a little bit. We've been very lucky the last couple of years to have a legal intern under Ms. Marshall's guidance from ASU, and so we have had them really help us align a lot of the board policies, the statutes, and been very fortunate to have that. So we've done a lot of cleaning up along the way. Next steps, we have to continue the data analysis and refinement of our tiered behavioral interventions, and I showed you just a very 30,000-foot view of our top three behavioral referrals and that focus on alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. But naturally, there's a more in-depth disciplined data discussion that happens at each of the campuses, and my department helps pull that data and helps those campuses have those discussions. We really need to expand our youth mental health first aid training for obvious reasons. This is an area that we've been focusing on the last several years, and we see a continued need. The review of our Arizona Youth Survey 2018, every two years, the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission works with all of the schools in the state. We have participated for the last six surveys, so we have years and years of data, and this allows us to examine the at-risk behaviors that students self-report, and it also allows us to look at the, what is new in the report, the adverse childhood experiences, the ACs. And so, and that helps us narrow down that training that we need for staff, and we can customize it for our middle schools and for our high schools. And I should have stated that the AYS data is at the eighth, 10th, and 12th grade level. It happens in the spring every two years. We are looking at implementation of, on trauma-informed practices. Again, this really narrows down looking at the mental health needs of students and allowing teachers to be able to see students that are in distress, change of behavior, and address them accordingly and get them referred to the individuals they need to. Implementation of social-emotional curriculum, which some of our campuses have been doing. And again, it's really based on need and looking at that discipline data, and so it's, we're not saying that everything has to be standardized at every single campus. It's really based on the needs of each campus by looking at their data sets. And then enhance our community partnerships. So just today, we, last couple days, worked with Communications Department. We're adding a section on student services, parents as partners, and their prevention messages, that we're going to be working on, making sure that our parents are getting prevention messages. And a lot of them are coming from the governor's office, specific to that Health and Wellness Grant that we're under. So we're trying to, again, utilize those resources that we have from that grant to expand it, to impact more of our schools. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Board Member Hartman?
Thank you, Dr. Sakos. It was great to see that the behavioral intervention program seemed to be working pretty effectively and continued improvement in our students. Two questions, two kind of areas of question. The first was on the ATOD statistic. That was pretty concerning, seeing the 386 to go to 586, 50% increase. Can you, do we, do we have any data associated with opioid use or prescription drugs specifically? Does there break down behind those statistics, and what does that look like?
So with our Office Discipline Referrals, the categories are very vague. It's alcohol, tobacco, or other drugs, and so they're categorized just that way. But in working with the campuses on our more serious violations, they contact me, we have not seen the opioids or heroin on the campuses. What we see on the campuses increase is, and it depends on which campus that it is, we do see the increase of prescription drugs, controlled substances. Which is really what they're saying is that gateway to that use. What we do see, the data that we do get specific to these harder drugs is through the Arizona Youth Survey, because these are students that self-report. It's student perceptive data, and so we do get more of a bigger picture of what is happening. But that AYS data is not necessarily reflective at school, because it says lifetime use, 30-day use, and so it does encompass outside of the school.
So I guess specifically then, based on the data and the trend that we're seeing in the ATOD category, what are we doing to understand it at a campus level, understand what that trend looks like compared to the state? What are we doing in that respect?
So what's nice, when the AYS data comes out, it does give a comparison, each school to the SUSD, to Maricopa County, and to the federal, wherever they gather that federal data. And so we do see comparative data, and then we begin working with our campuses to have those data dialogues. You know, sometimes it's a little uncomfortable for schools to share that with the parent group, but we need to. I, on a yearly basis, with the exceptions of last year, present to Scottsdale Parent Council. I think it's alarming for our parents to see, but that does create that demand for, wow, we need to know more, because it's not an SUSD problem, it's not an Arizona problem, it's a problem in our nation, this drug use, and especially with these harder drugs. So we basically have to use our data to inform individuals and then talk about what are we going to do as a community.
So I don't know if this is the time to go into that detail, but I am interested in exactly what we are doing with the data and how we're communicating to our parent communities and how we're working with our administrators. I mean, I just think a 50% increase is significant and makes it a priority. Do we have times, can we get time slated for that at some point?
Sure, and I can have that discussion too, and I'll work with Dr. Krieger. Typically, we have our AYS data by now, but we'll have it in the summer, once our campuses have time to digest it, to go through it, then we can talk about that systematic approach at each of the campuses. Because like I said, you know, alcohol and marijuana may be a concern in one, you know, learning community versus, you know, the perhaps prescription drugs in another community.
Exactly, and that's the reason why I'm kind of interested in seeing it by community, by school.
Okay.
And then one last question, on the student assistant program, SAP, what kind of data are we collecting from that? How frequently is it being used? What are we finding, the outcomes from it? Do we have information on that?
We do. We have an end-of-year report that we get from Jewish Family Children Services that I'm happy to send to Dr. Krieger to send to the board. It does show the number of students served this year, approximately 4,200. It shows, I shared the different psychoeducational groups up here at Glance. It shows you how many participants there were in that area, how many students were referred out. And like I said, this is data that we're required to share with the city of Scottsdale alongside our Office Discipline Referral data, like I showed you here tonight, to say, hey, your money is making a difference in our schools, and we appreciate it. So I can send that end-of-year report so that you can look at that.
Okay. I would be interested in that as well. And then just one last question on that point. Does that data, SAP data, break down kind of mental health, those types, does it break it down by category? Because I would be interested in understanding, you know, how we are, how we're doing in terms of detecting those types of behaviors that can be intervened in.
Yeah. Because those behaviors, the behaviors that are exhibited, they're referred to a group to address those behaviors, but the group participation in and of itself is not diagnostic. So no one's going to say, this is related to depression, or this is related to grief and loss. And so we don't, JFCS does not collect that data, nor do we. We do have, you know, our students that are on Section 504 plans or have IEPs, we may have more concrete information, but that is not anything we enter and we track. But we do see, I can tell you anecdotally, we do see a lot of students with anxiety, a lot more anxiety than we have in the past years, those pressures, and then we also see depression.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the follow-up, too.
You're welcome.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Sakos. I just want to echo what Board Member Hartman said regarding the alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. I'm going to make a little bit more specific request in that we bring back to the board a specific action plan for each of the, you know, if 80% of the issue is three campuses, then just those three campuses, like focus on where the real issue is and then bring back an action plan for those campuses at a future board meeting.
Sure.
And what that looks like beyond just, here's what the data says, but to also include, and here's what we're going to do about it as a district.
Absolutely.
Board Member Beckham?
Thank you, Dr. Sakos.
I'll think your mic is on.
Thank you, Dr. Sakos. There we go. And I'll just piggyback upon what they were talking about, because I had similar questions. One, wondering, how is the district training our teachers and administrators to address the issues when they see them on campus, and how to be more observant so that they are seeing what's going on campus? And I guess you would take it from the ADOT? No, ATOD.
ATOD.
And then also on a more social-emotional level.
So in terms of the alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, this training is most relevant at the middle and high school level and does look different between school. And we do have our school resource officers. They are a valuable asset to do the presentations to teachers. That is one avenue, is they're going on, and they're talking about ATOD awareness, what to look for. We also have some of our community partners, such as Not My Kid, has also come onto many of the campuses, Community Bridges, and has of the campuses, Community Bridges, and has, and shows our teachers and our parents. So, they do both staff and parent presentations. But again, it does vary by campus. It's an in-time training that are, that is initiated by our school administrators, but they are provided the resources. So, that's how we do that recognition of the, of students that, you know, may look like they're under the influence in class. In terms of looking at the social-emotional, there's a couple of different ways. Yearly, we do training. It's, it's live training, and it's also one of our Moodle courses. And in our bullying prevention, bullying awareness training, it talks about shifts in behavior, behavior where students become withdrawn, and not to ignore those types of changes in behavior, and where referrals to campus, to the campus administrator is important. So, teachers get that yearly. They, we have not, you know, depending on the campus, we don't have really, and that's where I've talked about the expansion in our action plan, we need to do more in terms of the trauma-informed care, the mental health first aid. I mean, these are a lot of things that we have to continue working with our teachers on. Because we've, we've touched on it a little bit, but there's always room for process improvement.
Sure. So, a couple more questions. The Arizona Youth Service Survey, is it available to the public by the Governor's Office every year, too? So, parents can go on, like the Governor's website?
So, the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission is the one that manages that survey. The only thing available online is the county reports, Maricopa County, Pinellas County, Yavapai County. The district gets our SUSD data. Our SUSD data is typically something I share with our, I've shared it with Scottsdale Parent Council. I've shared it with our Scottsdale Police Department, JFCS, our community partners, to know what our students are reporting. And then, our campuses individually has shared it with their constituent groups on campus as well. So, we don't really advertise each individual school. Try to keep that contained, so the schools can have those discussions with their communities.
Okay. But the public can go and see a broader picture of what is happening?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for where to find that. I've heard very positive feedback regarding the social workers in the three high schools. So, I would be interested, when you put together the report, that we look at how we're measuring the effectiveness of our social workers, and then seeing that measurement. I mean, I know it's just been a year, but I'd like to start with that baseline, so we can see how effective it is.
Absolutely. And some of these things I can send you in advance. I'll send them to Dr. Krikard, and perhaps in one of his reports. All of the three high schools that are participating all have strategic plans with action steps. It's very, by month, exactly what they have to do. It's very prescribed. And that's what we're trying, we want to look at modeling with our campuses, not under the grant, to talk about how it worked with those campuses the first year, and then the results that they're seeing. So, I'll, that is one action plan that is already ready for those three schools. A little bit different on each school, but you can get an idea of what that looks like.
And am I correct, and the ATOD, so when a student has a first offense, they go to a suspension, is what the minimum consequence is? And I would like, because restorative justice has been, you know, kind of a buzzword, and something that is being talked about on a national level. And there seems to be a lot of positive feedback. And part of the negative feedback is that when you just automatically suspend these kids, and they're just at home, and they're not in school. So, I would like to look and see what the, you know, the effectiveness of that suspension, does it cause additional problems? To really maybe look at that one area, to see if suspension is the most positive consequence for these students or not.
Sure. Board Member Beckham, we actually, in the last few years, it used to be you were suspended nine days, and had an automatic participation in drug and alcohol. But really, we could not force some of our students and our families to go, because it's quite comprehensive of a program. But when we said, nine days will reduce the suspension to five days if you participate, our participation rate in our drug and alcohol counseling has skyrocketed. So, we have seen a big increase, and it's really been an incentive. We can certainly look at a more of a decrease, because I agree, we need to get students back in school as soon as possible. Sometimes they need to be removed for a period of time, but there are times where they, they can come back on, and, you know, be okay to come back on. I will also, I'm going to make myself a long hair, a list here, with what they call the RJIP Program, so Restorative Justice Intervention Program. Our Scottsdale Police Department does provide an annual report as well, not by name, but they have seen quite a success. We see the participation rate, the 90%, of the last report I saw, 90% of the individuals referred to restorative justice have completed the program. And their recidivism rate of students who are repeat offenders with a criminal action is very low. And they're actually, our Scottsdale Police Department is presenting to the, some state conference next week. Where are you, Officer? Hmm, he's not in here. We were just talking about that earlier, that, and there's going to be a big presentation, because Scottsdale Police Department is the model. But we have seen some great impact from RJIP. And you have to be a first-time offender, you know, the victim has to agree to the, you know, and what we do is we accept, if they go through the RJIP Program, and they do their community service through RJIP, and they do their drug and alcohol counseling, we count that as what we're requiring, so that families see a real big incentive in participating.
I'm going to jump, jump off of those comments, because I very much appreciate and value that path of really acknowledging and understanding if there is proactive action taken, when there's a first offense, and how involved do the parents get? And how involved does the family become in trying to change the course of this student and staff? And how much they take advantage of all the resources that our district does have? I mean, that's valuable information we need to take a look at and understand. You know, do we have these alternatives and options to just pure punishment? But they're just not utilized by our families or our students. And, and really taking a hard look and understanding that, knowing, well, if they do take advantage, here's the positive consequences of that, and vice versa. I think that's a terrific path to be going down. Very much appreciate the Scottsdale Police Department for their, the way they handle so many of our students, and, and the difficult situations that they can find them in. I would also say, as a parent, I know one of the most impactful conversations that I had a couple of years ago, it was at a parent meeting, and our SORO was, you were probably there, Dr. Sakos, as me, our SORO was presenting, as well as Not My Kid. And for a parent to really start grasping and understanding the vaping issue in our campuses, the increase of the drug use, go even go far as the behavior of cell phones and texting and all of that, there's, there's a lot of opportunity to open our parents' eyes to what's going on to our campuses. And I'd love for some of these conversations to get into, and get feedback from our sites, you know, middle schools and high schools especially, of the challenges they face, and getting parents to connect when they have an issue with a student, and, and getting them involved, and, and again, getting them to participate in a more proactive solution, I, I think would be a great part of this conversation as well. So, definitely appreciate all the incredible work that's done in our campuses every day to support our students. Any other comments or questions? All righty. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Important topic. All right. So, we'll move on to our next information discussion item, 5B, Discussion on Compilation of Spending on Capital Override.
Madam President, Governing Board Members, Dr. Krikard, Ms. Como, good evening. Going to go over where we're at with the capital override for, for this fiscal year. Obviously, our first year of it, from the election that we had in November of 16, it was 8,500,000 for five years. This is the first of five. We divided the funds among seven categories. The FFNE is Fixtures, Furniture, and Equipment, Instructional Materials, Playground Improvements, Fine Arts, Athletics, Library, and Technology. And then, the funds are allocated for individual schools based on student count. Amounts per category per year, you can see the dollar amounts there. Technology has the lion's share of that. And technology also gets involved with instructional materials based on curriculum. A lot of the curriculum nowadays is technology-based, so there's some overlap between those two. And then, unspent amounts are carried forward into the new year budget. So, if there's dollars unspent, they carry forward into that category, and that school into the next year. Budget oversight by category, and this is the, well, for lack of a better phrase, the chain of command for when somebody wants, has a need in their school or department, this is who they would go to, to start the process, to request those funds. So, Fixtures, Furniture, and Equipment, that is handed down to the individual school principals. School principal wants to purchase a capital item with their FFNE budget, they would talk to their supervisor, and then they bring it to me. Quite frankly, if the principal and the supervisor both agree, unless it's just something that is obviously inappropriate, I don't pass judgment. I, I, I concur with the supervisor and the principal as to what their need is. And you can see the individuals by position for the different categories, that individuals who have a need for something would approach with their request. The, as you can see, those end at the assistant superintendent level, and if there's questions, uncertainty, if it bleeds into another area, I can tell you from experience that those discussions end up in cabinet with the superintendent for decisions to be made, so that it's a, a well-balanced decision ultimately that gets made. This is where we're at now. This was the budget. As you can see, the budget, got the asterisk there. When you total them all up, you see down at the bottom, it's 9,789,000. That's a million 289,000 higher than the 8,500,000. And that's because there was carry forward from a previous capital override. And so, we carried the previous capital override dollars that were left, and, and put it on the budget for this year, just as we'll carry over any unspent funds from this year into the following year. And you can see the year-to-date expenditures. We've still got a couple of more weeks, and then the encumbrance period to get things paid that were ordered, haven't come in and been paid for yet. That's it in a nutshell, short and simple. Subject to your questions and comments of where we're at on the capital override.
All right. Great. Questions? Comments? Board Member Kravitz.
Could you go back to the previous slide? I just noticed, let's see, Fine Arts, it seems we budgeted approximately 630,000 more dollars than have actually been invested at this point? Do you have any ideas why? Did you say this reflects things that we're still waiting on, or haven't?
This is, right, we had budgeted, if we look back to the original budget, it was 500,000.
Right.
There were 478,000 in Fine Arts from a previous capital override, which made this year's budget, added to that 500,000, makes this year's budget 978,000. And year-to-date, they have spent 345,000.
Okay. Do we know, do we have any ideas to why they haven't, our, our schools haven't submitted more requests? I mean, I just remember going to some schools, and the curtains on their stages were ripped, or there were problems with some of the pulley systems backstage. So, when I see that they're not spending the money, I, I think of those things that need to be improved.
Right. The, for the needs, when the, whether it's department or the principals identify the need, go back to who's responsible for it, and that's the individual that they would contact. So, in Fine Arts, if a principal had torn curtains, or a faulty sound system, or light system on a, on an auditorium, they would contact the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, make their request of what they need. And that would then go up to the Assistant Superintendent for Ed Services. So, you're right, based on what was budgeted, and what has been spent year-to-date, the requests have not been coming in.
And I know you don't oversee Fine Arts. I just thought, if you had any idea, I'll ask Mr. Johnson about that.
Dr. Krikard? Did you have a comment?
In my experience, it's also true that sometimes schools will collect their money over several years, because they have a larger expenditure in mind at the end. And so, that, that money, remember, is divided by almost 30 schools, and by student count, divided by 23,000. So, some schools, some elementary schools, might not have enough money to buy what they really need in one year. So, they roll it over to the next year, sometimes three, two. So, there's some of that, I would guess, considering.
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you. So, to approach Board Member Kravitz's question from a different angle, I get that within a bucket, it's divided across the schools based on student count. But how were the original budgets created across these categories?
Back to this, is this the?
Yes.
I do not know. This, this is what I inherited. When I went and asked, you know, on our capital budget, and what are, what are the budgets, this, this was the documentation that we had in the Business Department, that was decided upon prior to my time, and, and I do not know who, who ultimately made the decision, or what group got together to make that decision. But that is the budget that, that we have in the Business Department. And quite frankly, until superintendent directs us otherwise, that we, you know, we will stick with the budget that we were given.
So, I guess I'll, and fair enough, but maybe rather than ask the question of, why aren't we spending to budget, maybe we should be asking the question, is the budget right to begin with? So, and that's rhetorical. I don't know which question is, maybe they're both, they both should be asked, but, you know, do, I would have expected to see a plan submitted by the schools based upon what their needs were, almost like a zero-based budgeting, vet those needs, and not necessarily all the time does it make sense to allocate based upon student count. I mean, sometimes if a school made a huge investment, you know, two years ago, they may not need to make such a large investment. If a school is being rebuilt right now, they may not have a need at the same level, even though they have the same number of students, to a school that's not scheduled to be rebuilt in the next seven years. So, I would have, I would encourage us to do, to relook at the budget, zero-based budgeting, build it up, versus push it out. That's just my suggestion.
Board Member Beckham.
I'd like to add to that. If you go back to the next slide, which shows the oversight responsibility, the next, there we go, thank you. One of the issues that I see is, well, I'm going to pick up on what Board Member Kirby said first. I would think you would be able to go to any one of these, and let's just take Fine Arts. So, you'd be able to talk to the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, or the Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, and they would be able to answer those questions, since they are the ones responsible. Now, when you have two people responsible, I hope that one of those is maybe the keeper of the documentation and the plan that's talked about, so that they would know. So, that might be one area where we can go back and ask those who So that might be one area where we can go back and ask those who are responsible, so maybe we can get that documentation so that we'll have what was done last year, since it's the beginning of this bond. And we can put it together so we'll have a history for the next eight years in case we have any other turnover. People can walk in and the documentation will be available for them. The only other area I see on here is that I would like to see one position responsible for the capital override. And there's not one person that's, you know, and I'm just going to take CFO, should also then be on every category if it's chosen, that it's the CFO. So that you have one person in this district who completely understands the capital override budget, what's being spent, understands that plan that Board Member Kirby is talking about. So that's something maybe to look at also.
Yes, if I may. Board Member Beckham. Yes, if you carried this out to its logical solution using smaller font, then CFO would be at the end of each, be second to last each line, and superintendent following that. But as Doug, as Dr. Virgil did say, he does review those, and if something seems out of line, then brings it back for all of those requests for purchases. And so, but we will discuss in cabinet on a Monday morning when everybody's back in town, find out a little bit more about where this came from, what decisions were made, and then what the process is for rebuilding that if it needs to be rebuilt, and to look at the actual needs rather than the Christmas list approach. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add to Board Member Kravitz's comments is, there is quite often in this district a disconnect at certain levels with, we have funds and we have, we have plenty of investment, dollars to invest. And then down in our classrooms and teachers talking to parents, it's, I have no money for this and I have to buy my own this and my own that. And there's been that disconnect for a very long time. I'd love to see us tackle, now that we actually do have some funds, to tackle that disconnect and really make sure we're communicating with staff at our sites. Here is what we have available, what are your needs, and kind of, you know, work on that dialogue that happens at our sites too often of, you know, we just don't have it.
Along those lines, we did put this on the school budget so that they could see it. Prior to doing that, the schools couldn't see their allocation when they went into the, to the eye vision systems to review their budget. So we, we made it visible for them so they could see it. And then we also distributed to these individuals copies of that budget plan that we had so that the information was out there to the administrators that are in charge of it and the individuals in charge of the schools as to what was available on their behalf.
Fantastic. That's great. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much. Good news. Still have some dollars to spend in a few weeks. All right. Okay. So we will move on then to our next information discussion item, 5C. Second read, consideration of amendments to policy DIE, audit, financial monitoring, consideration of delegation of regulation DIER, policy DIEA and its exhibit DIEAE, evaluation of internal auditor and internal auditor evaluation. Ms. Marshall, welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Krikard and Sandra, while I find this to pull up for you. I am bringing back to you the policy that we discussed, that you discussed in your work study on April 30th this year. At the time, the main focus of that discussion was, does the board want to continue to have a position for internal auditor? Policy DIE called audits slash financial monitoring is the policy that contains a requirement that the district have an internal auditor. Earlier this school year, our position for internal auditor was eliminated, and so we do not currently have an internal auditor. So the question was, do we align the policy to the reality and take the reference to internal auditor out, or are we interested in bringing that position back? Based on the discussion that you had that day, I took it that the board was interested in not continuing the position. And so I took the liberty of providing you with a revision to that policy and its related regulations and exhibits which deal with the evaluation of the internal auditor to delete all those references. However, I think you might want to continue to have a discussion with your new acting superintendent. So this is for information and discussion and further feedback, and I will bring back a revision that reflects what you talk about today. And with that, I think I'll hand it over to Dr. Krikard for comments while I find this document to pull up for the screen.
Thank you. Dr. Krikard.
Does she have permission to hand it over?
Absolutely. She can do whatever she wants.
Okay. Members of the board, having observed that discussion, I was struck by the memory of being in two different districts that had an internal auditor and the usefulness of that person in even the simple things of monitoring the school's student activities accounts, but especially the other cash accounts that's very difficult to keep track of. And the auditor helps keep schools in line with what the USFR calls for. And then there are always larger issues. Now, in both those cases, the internal auditor reported to the business manager or the CFO. So there has to be a certain trust in there that you've hired the right superintendent and the right CFO to hire an internal auditor. But the function itself is, it was seen more like an inspector general in terms of being from the outside, being part of the organization, but yet viewing things from the outside coming in and preventing some issues that might get caught in a regular audit, in an annual audit, that may be a problem. So it was a nice check in those districts for the purchasing department as well as the business department and the schools themselves. That, my input.
All right. Board Member Kravitz.
I watched the video from our meeting on April 30th to refresh my memory of what was discussed. I, there was a lot of discussion, but I didn't feel that we came to any conclusion about the benefits or lack thereof of an internal auditor. I feel that if we, you know, it's 2020 hindsight, but perhaps if we had had an internal auditor, we may have avoided some of the, of our more recent pitfalls. I know there was a discussion about, I think Mrs. Hartman mentioned value added. If it's not apparent, then, you know, perhaps it'll be a question of why we have one. Is there a false sense of security was another issue that was brought up, issues of who does the internal auditor report to. But I think we need to continue to, again, to have this discussion about whether there's value. I think that there probably is value in bringing back an internal auditor. I know it's an expense, but it is somewhat covering ourselves so that, as I said, we can avoid some of the issues that we've had this year. Thank you.
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you. Dr. Krikard, in the other districts that you mentioned, did the auditor work on contained projects that had a hard beginning, a hard end with a scope of work and an attached work program that resulted in a report at the end? Or were they more just in the business office and almost just functioned like a compliance employee?
No, really more of the former. There was a schedule of accounts and schedule of schools that these people would work through during the course of a year, varium for years, for different seasons to cover high seasons and low seasons in terms of expenditures and so forth. But did work on a regular schedule.
So I guess, listening to your recollection of experiences, if we could structure an internal, if we could hire an internal auditor that had the appropriate structure with transparency to the board and to the public of specific projects that they were going to work on, scope of work with reports that were public reports at the end of that work, that would be different than what we've had in the past and something to consider. The other option that I'll throw out, as I've reflected on this as well, is to take the salary and benefits associated with that position and just contract out. We decide those same projects and just hire on an, as needed basis, an external auditor, a contract auditor to come in as a third party, which really is an outside person looking in versus kind of the fox watching the hen house, which is the former, or could be interpreted as the former. So I agree, we need to think through this. I don't think we should completely walk away. My feeling, though, is that we should completely walk away from the way we've been doing it because it hasn't worked.
Board Member Hartman.
Thank you. So, Dr. Krikard, it would be useful to have a specific recommendation from you because it's been kind of an interesting conversation on this topic. Everyone has a different opinion. My takeaway from the April 30th meeting was that when we reached out to other school districts, Dr. Virgil helped reach out to some of the larger districts, the feedback was most didn't have it, and those that did used it at a very transactional level. I think it was Mesa Unified that was talking about, they wish they had someone operating at this level, but it's at this level. So I guess that's what I'm looking for is the overall recommendation because a transactional looking at cash accounts and at the school level, that is a business office operation. And there's a compensation that's commensurate with that. If we want to do something that, quite honestly, it sounds like other school districts aren't, what that would look like to me is more at a value-add level, which is you would have a multi-year audit plan. You'd look at procure-to-pay, you look at HR, you look at finance. Within each one of those, you would drill down within that, and that would take years to do in a complex organization. But you would start with some type of prioritization on where the biggest risk is. That's a completely different role, which then should report to the board and should have, whether it's an internal, external person, that's another conversation. But that's at another level that then should be not reporting to the business office. It just depends what the responsibilities are. That latter, I think there's a lot of value add. I also think it's an expensive role and it's much more complex. And I think if we went down that path, I know we're also going down an external audit review of key processes, procurement, finance, and HR were the three that we requested. I would, as part of that proposal, which I'm not sure where we're at in the RFP process, hopefully we're getting them and we'll be talking about that, I would ask them for their recommendations as to, based on their review of the process, what would they recommend is an ongoing recurring review of that particular process. Because there is a lot of expertise that we could use from the outside. In fact, our external financial auditors may have a point of view on that as well since they've been looking at us for, you know, over ten years as well. So if that's possible, I guess the short question in that is maybe a recommendation from you based on talking to other external providers on what you think the highest and best use and return on investment of that role would look like. That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Yes.
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. And listening to her, you know, there may be some, this did precede you, but we as a board have been asking for the external reviews on HR and procurement for months now. And for us to proceed forward now with growing administration with an internal auditor and an undefined role, when for three months we've not taken any action on the external review of the two processes and departments that we know for a fact need an audit, which our procurement and HR seems backwards to me. It seems almost like we're in denial. So I would, I would ask that the team focus first on that request, that old request, and let's see what the recommendations are that come out of that, and then come back and revisit the internal auditor.
Right. I agree. I just believe, I wouldn't want to think that my view on an internal auditor is so superficial. I mean, that's obviously a huge need in this district, and I have heard you as a board call for that in the past. And I think, long run, money spent can save a lot of money at the end and maybe more importantly, save a climate of distrust and lack of confidence that is costly in so many other ways.
I'll just join in and completely agree with my fellow board members. I think the consensus at our last meeting was that what we had in the past did not necessarily make our organization healthier, stronger. We've had issues building up for years and that role, whatever scope it did have, it wasn't helping us, you know, certainly wasn't stopping us getting from where we eventually got. And so I think that was questioned unanimously as just hiring an individual, not sure what they're supposed to do, and tackling the much bigger issues that we need to tackle in the critical departments that we need to tackle them in, it seemed like money poorly spent and questioned our, the value we're going to get for that investment. I love what Board Member Hartman said, or Kirby, I can't remember which, but the idea of not putting the cart before the horse. We've already said we want to take, have someone externally take a look at our departments and really potentially train a lot of our staff, bring in recommendations of what we need to do and move forward from there rather than just keeping a ball rolling that we know is kind of going in the wrong direction. So I agree with this path wholeheartedly.
And I also believe that those two departments in particular, but most of our departments, would welcome the help. Take a look at what we're doing, tell us how to be more efficient, make sure that we're, we don't want to break the law.
Absolutely.
Let's, you keep us in line.
Any further questions or comments? All right. Ms. Marshall. All good then?
Got it. Thank you.
Go with that policy language right now. Not quite sure wherever we go with that, but, okay, so we'll move on to our next information, our last information discussion item, 5D, discussion of 2018, 19, and 1920 district calendars.
Oh, there you go. I didn't know you were going to do this. Yeah. So, does this, will it work for you? Is that what you want?
Just click that.
Yep. Back and forth. There you go.
Madam President, members of the board, the question came to us at cabinet from board members to take a look at this coming year's calendar and the next year's calendar, where in each of those years, school for students gets out after Memorial Day. And so look at what are some options in the present, in the calendar as accepted to make some changes to it, to have us get out before Memorial Day and still maintain, maintain schools get out before Memorial Day, student days are a hundred maintain schools get out before Memorial Day, student days are 180 days, and teacher professional days are six, so 186 contracted days. We, we did, did look at the possibility of counting the instructional minutes rather than the days and, and for reasons that, if you want to pursue that, Dr. Virgil or, or Mrs. Marshall would be happy to explain. In essence, the state pays us for 180 days, and if we were going less than 180 days, although meeting the statutory limit of time, we would not be paid for 180 days. Is that about right? So let me, let me show you some options for, what? You didn't get that. Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, can you, Board Member Kirby had a question.
So we, this year, had less than 180 days because we used instructional minutes. I'm hearing now for the first time maybe that we did not get paid this year?
No. They, yeah.
Or was there an exception made?
Madam President, governing board members, we got paid for the, for, for the year. So we didn't get shorted any money. What Dr. Krieger was referring to was if you'll think back when Prop 301 passed, the standard was 175 days, and the state specifically added five days and paid districts an additional dollar amount for those extra days in, in the funding. And so if you go less than 180, you're going back against the intent of Prop 301, which was to expand it to 180 days. Because we used to get paid on 175, the school was 175 days, and Prop 301 gave districts additional money to expand it to 180.
And even though we met the instructional minutes, the legislature was looking at days.
Correct.
So, so how does that translate into what we just did in the 1718 school year? My point being, if it was okay for us to do it this year, why would it not be okay for us to do it next year, to use instructional minutes? And, and if you're saying it's not okay for us to do it because of Prop 301 for next year, then does that mean, do I deduce then there's going to be potentially, maybe we don't know about it yet, but a possible penalty down the road for 1718?
We did not get penalized this year. I think this year was an exception because of what took place and the, and the exception as to the reaction from the legislature. I think if you started to go less than, if a number of districts, multiple districts chose to do that and go by the hours and backed off the 180, my expectation would be that there would be a legislative backlash to that based on the Prop 301. And you have to remember that Prop 301, it was voter protected, but it's not anymore because the legislature extended that with that recent legislative action, so it no longer has the voter protection on it. And then I, I suppose, if you want to call it speculation, fine, but I would anticipate that you would get legislative backlash if you found, if you did it and then another district heard you did it, another district started doing, and pretty soon you got 100 districts backing off of it. I would anticipate a legislative backlash.
Okay.
Because of the Prop 301 money that was paid to districts to expand from 175 to 180.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Virgil. So I honestly believe this is not as difficult as the packet you have in front of you looks. So, so let's start first with the, with the 2018-19 proposed calendar. And you have in, in front of you, a small packet that says version one at the top, and there are four versions. In the original calendar, teachers return, returning teachers come back on August 1st and have professional development day August 1st and 2nd, are off on Friday the 3rd, have another professional day or teacher day on the 6th, Monday, and school starts on Tuesday the 7th. So our proposal, and then school, because school gets out after Memorial Day, and there are three days after Memorial Day that we currently have in the contract that, that school is held, the 28th, 29th, and 30th. So we need to recoup three days while maintaining 186 days for teachers. So our first option, the version one, has Friday, August 3rd, being a teacher professional development day. So that picks up one day, does not change the beginning of school on the 7th. So we actually have four days, four days before school starts and two days, and then two days after school ends. And we pick up the days necessary for students by, there is a day at the end of each of the winter break and spring break, the Monday following is a professional development day, and those would be student days. We have heard from community members about after, after a long break to come back and, and not come back on Monday, it does not seem to make sense to people. We also have a, a day Wednesday before Thanksgiving off, and so this option would have that be a school day. So we'd pick up a day on October 15th, November 21st, and January 7th would be the three student days, which would bring our, the end of school to the 24th of May, a Friday before Memorial Day. And we would hold graduation on Thursday, the Thursday night for seniors, and then K through 11 would come to school on Friday in an early release day that was, that has been done in the past and, and was effective. So that's, that's the first option. It, it does not change the start of school, and it does get us out before Memorial Day with students, and teachers like this year would return after Memorial, Memorial Day for, for professional development. Version two does the same thing at the beginning of the school year with having teachers here on Wednesday the 1st, Thursday the 2nd, and then Friday the 3rd of August, and Monday the 6th, and school starting on the 7th. Does not change that day. It does pick, pick up another, it picks up a student day by eliminating the professional development day on October 15th. It also picks up the day before Thanksgiving and the day at the end of the winter break, those three days. And, and by having the two-day Thanksgiving break and picking up the other days and the days at the, at the end, we could actually end, sorry, oh, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. You're, you're not paid enough. So instead of May, May 31st, because we'd picked up an extra day for teachers earlier in the, in the year, they would actually get out on Thursday, May 30th after Memorial Day. So those two options do not change the start of the school year. Version three is to change the first day of school. I will tell you, we like one and two better, but to give you the options, start school on the 6th, still have a teacher day on the 3rd, you pick up a teacher day on the 3rd of August, start school on the 6th, pick up a day on October 15th, again, that Monday after the fall break, and also pick up the day in January 7th after winter break. This one, version three, keeps the day before Thanksgiving as a day off for school. So that has school ending the last day of school. Graduation would be, be on Thursday night, the 23rd, and the last day of classes for K through 11 on Friday, the 24th of May. Teachers come back the next week, the 28th, 29th, and 30th, Tuesday through Thursday for professional development. Version four is similar in that it starts school a day earlier on the 6th of August rather than the 7th, but it, it eliminates that day off before Thanksgiving, so that is a school day, and everything else being the same, has school actually ending for K-12 on Thursday, May 23rd before Memorial Day, and, and teachers coming in again for professional development on the, on that Friday, the 24th, and then the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of the next week. So version one and two keep the start of the school day the same, and slight options at the, the end of the year and the Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, day before Thanksgiving changes in those two versions. Three and four change the start of the school year to the 6th rather than the 7th start on Monday. There may be a timing issue with that if that's the version you like, though, with, people may have already planned vacations and so forth and know when school starts. But, so those are the, those are the options for next year. The 2019-2020 calendar has similar options, but I think I'll, I'll break here and, and see if you want to, if you have questions to ask or comments about the 1819 calendar options.
Board Member Hartman.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Krieger. Can you just clarify, I, I didn't exactly catch, what's the difference between version one and version two?
Version, version one. So they both pick up the teacher day on, on Friday, August 3rd? I have that. I have that.
Actually, it doesn't look like version two does that.
And version.
Am I looking at something different? I see version two, August 1 through 2 and the 6th.
So version two, version, version one has four teacher days before school, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday, and version two had, well, that has four also. There's no change in the, in the start time in these two, and then version one and two each have a, is that right?
Version two does not have the Friday.
Yeah, but they don't, when I see version two doesn't capture that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Okay. So version, version two does not have the Friday, where the teachers have a three-day weekend before school starts.
If I can jump in with a question, there, speaking of that 3rd, was it ever determined the staff of why initially it was recommended to not have that 3rd?
I've been told it was recommended because teachers may prefer to have a three-day weekend before school starts.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Okay.
Well, actu, actually, most of the teachers I know would probably be in their classroom working anyway. So, but, but it would not be, it would not be a professional development day, and it would not be credited in version two. That's why version one helps in that regard. Teachers are going to be working, and there'll be professional development on, on some of those days and, and other days working in, in the building. And, and it does get teachers out after Memorial Day, but one day, actually two days less than what was originally planned in the calendar.
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you. So I'm going to back us up a bit because I asked for this to be discussed, I pressed for this to be discussed because it seemed at the time obvious to me that we could use instructional minutes, not change the student calendar at all other than to, to cut off the days after Memorial Day. And so everything else stayed the same. And then we could tweak the teacher workdays just a little bit to not have them come back so many days. Tonight's the first time that I've heard that 301 is a concern. So before we get too far down this path, I think we need to discuss, does it make sense for us in June to be talking about actually changing the days for the student calendar for next year? When, when I first requested it, my belief was we could leave the days exactly like they were by using instructional minutes and just cut off the days after Memorial Day. Huge win. But that's not an option anymore. So what we're left with is changing either the start date, Thanksgiving, you know, Thanksgiving is concerning. I'm sure there are families that have made Thanksgiving flight arrangements already. And then the teacher calendar becomes much more complicated as well. It wasn't as easy as I had initially proposed. So that, that's a question to my fellow board members. I guess if I had been told weeks ago that Prop 301 was a concern, I would have backed off, to be honest with you. I would have said, okay, I didn't know that, thank you for telling me. I wouldn't have asked for this huge exercise.
Board Member Kravitz.
Thank you. Versions three and four are non-starters for me because it's June 12th today, and we're, we would tell teachers that, oh, no, now you're coming, our first day of classes, August 6th. I can't even imagine communicating that to our community. So I would take those off the table. And again, I know there was a discussion about Prop 301, but I was, to be honest with you, was looking through my papers, looking at the different calendars, and then to change, my other issue is Thanksgiving recess as well. Would we still have enough instructional minutes if we maintained our current Thanksgiving break as planned? Because I, I'm sure there are families that have book tickets, and teachers that have made their plans for Thanksgiving as well. So would changing, I guess my big question is would changing, or keeping our original Thanksgiving break, would that, but, but changing the, our schedule in May, would that negatively impact our instructional minutes or our funding from the state?
We, we believe if you have students in school less than 180 days, that it will impact. And that, that was a discussion we held on Monday after our discussion over the weekend, and I'm sorry it didn't take place before that, but that, that's when the discussion took place, and that's why you have this. So you want my recommendation? Would be to keep the 1819 calendar as it is and work on the next year. We have time to do that. And, and we have options for that, but if you'd like us to, to go back and further explore the idea of the instructional minutes, we could do that with more time and, and bring this calendar back. It takes two readings, but it's, it's the 1920 calendar, so we would have time to do that.
Board Member Beckham.
Thank you for the little bit of history there, too. I was thinking maybe it was because we did get a lot of emails and phone calls regarding having classes after Memorial Day. So we were looking at that also. The other area that the community voiced was that the original survey, or the original calendar was based on a survey that had been taken the year in advance. So I would recommend, and one of my questions was going to be, who had the input? And did we do a survey, or did we get any input, or was it just Cabinet that came up with this new calendar? I think I got that answer right. It was the Cabinet who sat down. So that we didn't, we didn't survey students, teachers, anybody else. Okay. Which is fine. Okay, which is fine, I'm just looking really for facts here, because of the timing, it wasn't possible.
The original cal, the original calendar was based, I assume, because that's something that was there, that, that has been already published and so forth, so that, that was done through whatever calendar process was used.
Right. And, and we know maybe it wasn't the most accurate, because it, the, the survey was done, I don't know if it was nine months in advance of when the calendar was voted on. So, at least, I'm just putting this information out there, that if we're gonna be looking at the 19-20 calendar, I think that we need to take a survey, so that we can get the teacher input. We can actually look at what kind of process we want to have when we put together a calendar, and then let's follow that. One of the areas that was mentioned was that when we put these professional days together, the reason that you had professional days throughout the year is because that made them much more valuable. So all of a sudden, when I saw this calendar, those professional days were taken away, and, but nothing was mentioned to the fact that at least if we're taking them away for this reason, we understand that it may not be the best use of time and resources in this one year, but we probably don't want to carry that through to the second year, if it's believed that it is better to have professional development throughout the year, and then instead of just stacked at the beginning and the, the end. And you may not be aware of that little bit of history that we were given when we were deciding on this calendar.
Yeah, no, I, I was not, and, and there is a, there is a concern out there that the day, with the professional development day after the fall break on the 15th, so students are out for a week, and then that Monday they come back for a day, and then you have three early release days for parent-teacher conferences. There's a concern about that, to where they, where they were placed. And, and, and there was a time when, when we had regularly scheduled early release days for professional development, rather than full days. And that's something that we could look at, again, if you were interested. I don't know the histories of why, why they were stopped.
Well, my, my understanding is, is because the half-days were not as productive. Is that correct?
I, I agree. I think as board members, we were informed that a full day devoted, as opposed to a few hours, it was just, it was more productive.
So, I think that stems back to that process, let's be getting our stakeholders, who are teachers, or students, or community, or parents, involved in this process when we look at the calendar, so that maybe we can have a better understanding.
And that's always the plan, when you go out and you do three years' calendar, you, you have a committee, and you survey, and, and the representative committee works on the calendar together, works with, with restrictions that have been placed, with guidelines, and, and you come up with a calendar. I don't, I'm, I'm surprised that that result, the result of that process ended up with school getting out after Memorial Day, when I've been hearing consistently, and you've been hearing, that people are not happy with that. So, I don't, I don't know how this calendar was finally put together af, at the end of that process. But this is what we have, and as I said, at this late date, it's, it's probably advisable to stay with the calendar we have, people are making decisions, and then look, look at several different issues for the 19-20 calendar.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. I appreciate your offer of recommendation to leave 18-19 as is and change 19-20. Regarding the voter protection, but Prop 301 is still voter-protected for 18-19, right? The extension doesn't take place until 21?
Correct, correct.
So, could another possibility be that we go ahead and use instructional minutes for next year, 18-19, and then still take a look at 19-20, changing the days versus the minutes in 19-20? Get back on track, 19-20? That's rhetorical. I'm not, I'm looking, you're standing there, so I'm looking at you, but I'm...
I would wanna research, I would wanna research that in greater detail before we make that decision, and, and you're not voting on this tonight anyway.
Correct.
So, we would have, have time to do that research.
And so, let me follow, let me follow on with what I was thinking for the work, the teacher work calendar, if we move to instructional minutes, would be to go ahead and make August, I think it's the Friday, the 3rd, a work day. That, that cancels one of those days after Memorial Day. And then, we have two district recesses in September, a week apart, one the 10th, one the 19th, and make one of those a work day. That takes care of two for the teach, they're both religious holidays, but I'm not sure we have every single religious holiday as a district recess anyway. So that would take care of two of the days after Memorial Day that teachers would have to come back, and they wouldn't have to come back as for as many days. That's, that's, was originally what I was thinking.
I, I would, I would caution against removing one of those religious holiday days. Before we gave those Jewish religious holidays off, in certain schools in the district, it was very, very disruptive and, and very difficult with the number of absences and so forth.
Okay. So maybe one day, maybe just the 3rd then, of August. Any, every little bit helps, right? Particularly if the teachers are likely to be working that day anyway.
Board Member Hartman?
Thank you. So, for your consideration, what I was thinking is, from a parent's perspective, going after Memorial Day is a challenge. The three days to accommodate for that, to me, for consideration, you have more bird's eye view from an administrative perspect, perspective, or from a parent's perspective, that August 3rd makes a lot of sense, because teachers are going to be in the classroom anyhow. The days I would particularly look at are that October 15th and January 7th. Both of those dates extend an already one-week break, fall break, and winter break, to an additional Monday. From a parent's perspective, that's very challenging to take yet another day off, and I would just think that those would be the two days that would make a lot of sense from a parent's perspective on, in the classroom, for their student.
Right. But the catch is, you need a third day in order to get in, in front of the Memorial Day weekend.
That is three days, though, right?
That's...
No, the 3rd is a teacher work day, you need a third student day.
But...
Right. Unless...
But, could we scrub our instructional minutes for that third day? And add instructional minutes through the year? I mean, I mean, every minute adds up. I mean, elementary, I don't think would need to add anything, right? They're already, so it would probably only be middle schools and high schools that would have to take a look, and if they can't scrub it out and find it, and we're short, you know, 60 minutes, then we're short, we go with minutes.
And, if that doesn't work. To pick your poison, I would, I would eliminate the day before, making Thanksgiving a two-day holiday. I mean, it's a trade-off. Three days is very nice, but going after Memorial Day, I think, is a bigger issue for more families. So if you had to find a third day, that may be the place to look for it.
Okay.
Board Member Beckham?
I can't believe I actually saw this, because Sandy usually catches this. But just because this is a public document, and I noticed it, and if people who haven't listened to this and they get a hold of this, they're gonna think that a 12th grader is going to go to school the day after graduation. So it, on last day of classes, it says early release K through 12, and you have, it should be K through 11.
Right.
But I just didn't want that out there for the public to not understand.
Board Member Kravitz?
Thank you.
I think you had asked the question, how did we come to this calendar so that students were going to school after Memorial Day? It was, if I recall correctly, it was because our start days were creeping earlier and earlier, and it was our goal to try and get our start day later, at least into the two digits of August, rather than the first week of August, and it looked like we were almost going to creep into July, so I just wanted to...
And, and also the infusion of full-day professional development during the year.
Right. I, I agree. I think it's important even that our community understand, this was not just created, you know, for fun, or, you know, no thought put into it at all. We did have some challenges that, the discussion, there was discussion with this board, even not just so much for professional days, being more productive for teachers, those being full days, being more productive for teachers, but there was questions about how productive a half-day is for our students, and, and limiting those half-days. So, so there was discussion around that. I agree with you, I, I do probably think that there was thought about that August 3rd date as maybe a day for teachers to have in their classrooms, where they're not, professional development is expected, and it's a day for them to prepare. So that might have been why it was created. But we also balanced out the fact that we did want to add professional development into our calendar, but not creep so close to August, because we would hear from parents as well on that. The three days for Thanksgiving recess was certainly questioned, and obviously, even this conversation shows, anytime you talk about calendar, you get a lot of different opinions, and, you know, you, we could cut off Memorial Day, but then you're gonna have Thanksgiving conversations and, and emails regarding that. And, and the fact that to make, because I remember years ago, coming back after Memorial Day as an SUSD parent, for a very limited amount of time, or like two days, and they were half-days, and remember feeling how ridiculous that was. So I think there was conversations about making sure that if, if we don't want to go early in August, we make sure that week after Memorial Day is, is meaningful and productive, and, and not just, you know, coming back half-days watching movies. So, I mean, there was a lot of thought put into this calendar, and I'm gonna throw in the recollection, years prior, is that it, this was based off a template that was indeed created after a very thorough process, granted, it was years ago. And I know even coming in, that template, and that process was supposed to kind of expire, even with Dr. Peterson was here. But at that time, we, we were facing a lot of challenges and, and issues, and, and the district kind of decided they didn't want to tackle another huge committee and process to discuss the calendar. So we kept using the template, and that's what they used to create this, adding in those challenges.
Right.
That's kind of a little, in a nutshell, where we are. I, I kinda hear what was said, I, I'm not fond of staying, changing the start date, that's just a no-go for me at all. I'm not even, I'm hesitant at this point, since this has already been approved and gone out, changing anything about Thanksgiving, or, I mean, overall, I'm hesitant to change what we have. But, Board Member Kirby?
I would challenge the organization to look at instructional minutes. It's still voter-protected for next year, we did it this year. We could easily just take care of the last couple days after Memorial Day for the students. I, I'm not seeing why that's not an option for next year, at all.
No, no, it's, it's on the list. We will, we will explore that further.
Particularly if we have a commitment that we're not going to do it in 19-20.
All right. So, two things. First of all, I think it bears mentioning for the community who may, if they've not been here long, look at October and say, well, look, they have a week off in October. I know from all of the past surveys that the fall break is very near and dear to the families. No?
No. There's parents who value fall breaks as well, just gonna say.
That's what, that's, that's what I...
And, and I think thus the challenge of, of surveys. I, I mean, that, that is why. Always hesitant to tackle, especially when it seemed that this template, it was working, just, everyone was suggesting, to throw in wrenches like suddenly changing fall break, or change, it, this, this district just, I don't think has been compelled to take a hard look at this template again. But, we do have some factors that have changed it again.
Yeah. And the second thing I was going, going to say, in regard to your saying that they, that other things were going on in the district, and that's why they didn't tackle that. So that's why I figured that we would tackle it now, because there's nothing else going on in the district.
Who knew you were funny, Dr. Kreekard? Board Member Kravitz, did you have an additional...
I just wanted to say thank you, because creating a calendar is probably one of the most challenging things that happens in this district, and I appreciate you taking a fresh look at it and devoting the time to this, so thank you.
And, I would also like to thank Dr. Johnson for helping me put this presentation together, and hope that I did her presentation justice, so.
Okay, thank you. So, so we will be seeing this, though, at our next board meeting on the 26th. Is that correct?
Yes.
With, as far as the conversation?
Yeah, we, yeah.
I guess, just so our community understands that, that, that would be our last shot at, at anything, I think, I believe. Okay. All right. Well, so we'll move on to our next agenda item six, public comments. I have three cards here, in conformance with open meeting laws, governing board may not discuss or take action tonight on any matters raised during public comments that are not on the agenda. However, the governing board may respond to direct criticism, ask staff to review the matter, or ask that it be placed on future agenda. As a reminder, each speaker will have three minutes. Vice President Hartman and possibly our screen, I'm not sure. Oh, well, there it is.
Oh. Oh, before our consent? Can we do it before?
Sure.
Yeah. Because we have pub comment, and then we'll do consent.
Okay.
How's that?
Okay.
Okay, sorry. And, and the screen will indicate the time with a 30-second warning. Our first commenter is Jonathan Gelbart.
Good evening. President Pearlberg, board members, Dr. Kreekard, my name's Jonathan Gelbart, and I am a Republican candidate for State Superintendent of Public Instruction, running against Diane Douglas. I'm just here tonight to introduce myself to you all and to the Scottsdale community, for those of you who I haven't met before. I'm a born and raised Arizonan, went to Washington School District in the Northwest Phoenix area, benefited from their gifted program for, for most of my childhood. Went from there to Deer Valley District, Berry-Goldwater High School, and worked my way from there into Stanford, got my bachelor's there and master's in engineering, and moved back to Arizona because I wanted to get involved in the school system. Wound up at Basis Charter Schools, and was in the finance and operations area with them. But I'm running for this office to make sure that every kid has access to an excellent education, and to really change a few things about how this office has been working. I'd like to promote innovation in the schools by removing roadblocks to flexible new pilot programs, or project-based learning, interdisciplinary programs, anything that school districts would like to do. I think it would be great if they had more of the same types of flexibility that charter schools have. Second is to rebuild and transform the State Department of Education, to make sure that it's effectively supporting schools, providing them with the resources they need, and again, not, not putting up roadblocks to their success. I think there's a lot of work that can be done on data analysis in particular, and research, and supporting school districts in their efforts there. And finally, the state superintendent can be a better bridge between policymakers, like the governor, the legislature, and the state board, on the one hand, and the, and the schools, on the other hand. I've built working relationships with many of them already, and I've been traveling all around Arizona, meeting with schools, school leaders, teachers, parents, and hearing from them about how, how state government can help them, and, and again, have that kind of two-way communication that seems to be not happening right now. So I'll keep it short, and again, my name's Jonathan Gelbart, I'm happy to leave my contact information. Thank you very much for all you do.
Lucy DeGracia is next.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name's Lucy DeGracia, I'm a resident of Scottsdale, and I'm a parent of a 2010 graduate of Desert Mountain High School. Last fall, my daughter began a dual enrollment program, my other daughter, offered through EVIT. EVIT has students from three of the high schools in Scottsdale enrolled. There's approximately 18 students in all from this past year. My daughter's in the cosmetology, which has an extended day until 4:00 PM. SUSD has a... SUSD has a bus that brings them back to their designated high school. Uh, there's about five students in the cosmetology program out of all three of the high schools. The full-size bus is 70 seats. It comes back and forth almost every day. I asked, uh, I called Desert Mountain High School, asked to get my daughter on the bus. I was told my daughter does not qualify for EBIT because she is home schooled. Not true, she was already attending EBIT. I was led down an endless shuffle, contacting all of the schools involved, the Department of Transport, onto the Board of Governor, Governors who are sitting here today and have not responded to any emails or phone calls. I'm a mom. I can't fathom any other parent being forced to put their 16-year-old brand-new driver on the 101 every single day to navigate the highway back and forth during rush hour, coming back at four o'clock every day for a program that she's enrolled in specifically where there is a bus that's provided to bring the students enrolled in the program back and forth. Maricopa County signs to carpool or take the bus due to high pollution and in my current situation, I'm adding approximately 13,000 extra miles to the Arizona highways affecting the roads, the commuters and my family's carbon footprint. I have asked for no special privilege. I have offered to sign waivers of liability and I have even offered gas money, but upon learning that you guys have eight million extra dollars, I'm taking back that offer. Um, I humbly suggest that SUSD take the lead on what is fast becoming a divide between parents and the public school and prove that you are who you say you are. You are about all of the children, not just the ones who are going to earn you extra federal dollars. I have sadly now had to involve state legislature, the public, and I will be working towards passing legislation to pa, to secure the rights of all parents. Slamming bus doors or road blocking any potential doors of opportunity for kids to succeed solely because their parents are exercising their rights does not teach my daughter the lessons I wanted to learn, lessons about freedom, about decency, about common sense. Instead, she's learning that there are adults within our public system who value money and power over her safety and future success. In closing, I thank you for hearing me and I'd like to quote from the famous children's song, "Bus Driver Bob Says, 'Everybody on Board.'" And I hope we can make that true in the fall. Thank you very much.
Uh, I have not received an email from you, so if you would email me.
I will email you, I'm sorry.
Then we will, we will find a time to, uh, address these issues.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Our last commenter is Mike Peabody. Do I see?
Madam President, Governing Board Members, Dr. Krieger, sorry, Ms. Sandra. Welcome to June. I want to say first off, first and foremost, I wrote down in my card that rumors and lies would be my topic and that will be, but something else came to my attention and sitting over here during the first part of the meeting, I went back through all of the governing board documents that are posted online and found out since June, sorry, January 2016 to now, we've had 1,632 separations from the district. Now, if I remember correctly, we have just over 3,000 employees. So since January of 2016, we've lost half of our employees and had to replace them. The big question comes to why? Why have we lost these people? What can be done to retain these people? We, we lost a teacher of the year, Arizona Teacher of the Year. Question should be turned on to all of us. What can we do better? What can you do better? And as a candidate for the board, I've had to tackle that question. What can we do better? We have a lot of things that can happen. We can make the teachers our priority because the teachers directly relate to our kids who stay in the district. We can treat them better. We can welcome them more. But beyond that, the rumors and lies, since I am a candidate for the board, I've had a bit of muddling and go in my way, so I want to publicly state to the camera, hi, I am not in favor of closing any school in SUSD. I've looked at the numbers, I've seen the enrollments, as anybody can do online. I'm not in favor of closing Coronado. My son goes here. Yes, I've heard the rumor that I want to close Coronado personally. I can't do that. Takes you guys to do that. Well, it takes Dr. Krieger and the wonderful people behind me to do studies to do this and then you have to approve it and then the taxpayers have to vote on it, so. Big, long process. I can't do that. One of the other things that, well, being a candidate, collecting signatures, having the fun, meeting the people and talking to them, one of my biggest questions that I've had posed to me, what are we going to do for our curriculum? Why can't we have a curriculum that involves all schools? If something's going good, and I talked to Dr. Krieger about this, if something's going good at one school, how can we, why can't we transfer that to others? Why can't we take KIVAs, wonderful programs, and put them at Anasazi or any other place at work? Or Ho-Ho-Kum and Tavan and put them at Ta'ana Leah? Questions we need to ask to keep our kids, to keep our teachers. Please address them.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item seven. And Dr. Krieger, I think before we, uh, jump into our consent agenda, you want to make a, make some introductions?
Yes, thank you, President Pearlberg, members of the board. Excuse me. Uh, we are fortunate tonight to be welcoming some new administrative personnel to our ranks, uh, and so I would like to introduce to you first of all, Jennifer Waldron. Jennifer, would you please stand up? Jennifer is, is being hired, uh, as the principal of Anasazi Elementary School. Jennifer is a graduate of Ball State University in Indiana, uh, and she has been a teacher, instructional specialist and K.A. principal in the Cartwright District and came here and she has been an assistant principal of both Redfield and Copper Ridge Elementary School. Welcome, Jennifer. Also, um, in our book, and I don't know if you're here, Jessica Holbrook. Jessica is, is being hired as the Assistant Principal at Saworo High School and, uh, she is an undergrad, an undergrad at University of California Irvine and Graduate School at Chapman University in Ontario, California, where she received her Master's of Arts in Educational Leadership. And she is coming to us from Chaffee Joint Union High School District in Ontario where she is the Assistant Activities Director at that high school. Uh, her teaching experience is also in California, so we welcome Jessica to Saworo High School and, and to our district. Next, Crystal Holmes. Uh, Crystal is being hired for Desert Canyon Middle School Assistant Principal. Her undergraduate degree is from Nova Southeastern University in Davie, Florida and graduate degree from NAU in Educational Leadership. And she is currently the Assistant Principal at Coconino High School in Flagstaff and coming here, uh, to Desert Canyon Middle School and we welcome Crystal as well. And last of all, he was here and, and I think he had to leave Brendan Wagner, who is our new Director of Transportation. Brendan was an undergrad at Aquinas College in Grand Rapids, Michigan and, and also at Oakland University in Rochester and has a BA in Political Science. He has worked, he is currently the Director of Pupil Transportation in Chippewa Valley Schools in Clinton Township, Michigan, which is southeastern Michigan. Um, and he's also been the Supervisor of Maintenance and Transportation at Centerline Public Schools in Centerline, Michigan, and he comes here and will begin July 1st. So we welcome Brendan also.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. So I will, uh, for review, note that, uh, we will be removing Consent Agenda Item 7Z, Approval of the Purchase of Custodial Services Issued Through One Government Procurement Alliance Contract from the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended? Board Member Kirby?
I'd like to remove item V, as in Victor, for discussion.
Oh, okay. So I guess we'll postpone that motion until we have discussed, discussed item V, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Warrants Between Board Meetings. Do we have any additional pulls, agenda items that we'd like to pull while we're on the topic? Board Member Kravitz?
I, it's not to pull, but I just noticed under the Acceptance of Gifts, Chaparral Robotics, I think is listed twice as receiving gifts from Charos and I just wondered if one of those is supposed to be Desert Mountain, but, um, that's not to hold up the process. I just was to have.
Yeah, if there's an error, I think.
If it's, I just didn't know since.
Oh, noted. What, um, let's see, what, if that's.
Well, under acceptance of.
Acceptance of.
A.
A.
Seven A.
A, Acceptance of Gifts, yes, okay.
So I just wondered.
All right.
Since the Chaparral getting two gifts and they may have, but I just thought since Desert Mountain isn't listed in, um, car notice, okay.
Okay. So, yeah, so we'll pull, um, currently we're going to pull Agenda Item 7A, Acceptance of Gifts and Item, um, 7V, Resolution of Authorizing the Execution of Warrants Between Board Meetings. We will discuss those individually after we vote on consent, but again, noting that item Z has been removed. Thank. And pulled. Um, so do, I'll say again, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended? So move. Thank you, Board Member Hartman, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 5-0 and we'll tackle, uh, 7A first, Acceptance of Gifts. Do we have a clarification on this, um, posting?
It's Virgil.
Dr. Virgil, do we have a?
Uh, Madam President, Governing Board, Dr. Krieger, so Consent Item A, Acceptance of Gifts, and what is the question?
Go ahead, Board Member Kravitz.
Should I go ahead?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. It says the Charo Foundation funds for robotics. Chaparral is listed twice as has been received two gifts of $5,000. I didn't know if that was, I was just wondering if that was correct or perhaps one of those was for another high school such as Desert Mountain.
I'll have to check into it and, and research it and, uh, take a look and see if it was a, a double gift for Charo funding for robotics twice at Chaparral or if that was a, a typo that didn't get caught. I'll have to research it.
Yeah, we need to, and I, um, and I'll add on to that. This is in total $15,000 and my understanding with the Charos is it should have been more than that, so we need to double-check with the Charos also unless some of those funds were applied elsewhere.
Um, the question though, Dr. Virgil, if the amount of money that the board is accepting from the Charos remains the same, then couldn't we still approve it and then just make sure that, that the money goes to the right place? I'm not so sure that the.
We can approve it as amended.
I'm, we could prove it.
We're accepting the gift from the Charos in this amount, so.
But it specifically says Chaparral, twice. It says Saworo, Chap, Chap.
Right. I, I understand and we would, and we would clarify that, but I, but I was just wondering whether we really needed to, to table that.
Just amend it. Well.
We'll amend it, but we don't know.
We don't know how to amend it accurately.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have the information to amend it correctly.
Can we just?
Yeah, but the total is.
Chaparral for $5,000.
Well, the.
Yeah.
The reason, the reason, check me if I'm correct, the, the reason that we accept gifts so that the organization gets credit and usually a tax credit or a tax, a tax deduction for giving that money, and so the money goes to the school district and that's what they get credit for. We disburse that according to, to their desires, but I don't believe it has to be part of the acceptance of the gift as to where the money goes necessarily. I'm just saying if we, that may expedite.
Can I, can I? Okay, so I, I understand the confusion now. Um, you weren't here, but there was a specific, um, contribution that I made that the Charos matched that were supposed to go to the three different schools, Sorio, Desert Mountain and Chap that went to Worlds. That's, and you didn't know any of that. Details. So, so that's why they're, we're asking the question of where is Desert Mountain on here? As well as, as the dollar amount is now in question as well.
Because it might be 15 rather than 10. Okay, okay. Let's table this in.
I was going to say, is there any harm in bringing this agenda item in its entirety back on the 26th?
No, no.
Okay. So we will table that item 7A. And that brings us back to item 7V, as in Victor, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Warrants Between Board Meetings.
Board Member Kirby?
So, thank you. Um, and Dr. Virgil, don't go anywhere. He, Dr. Virgil and I had a email exchange, um, over the weekend regarding this item. Um, I do understand that we have approved this, um, in this language in the past, but as, as we, um, make decisions based upon the best information we have at the time, I now have new information that I may not have had a year ago. So, this background says that this resolution allows the distribution of warrants, which are payroll and expense checks between board meetings. And so it allows staff to basically pay any expenses, payroll I'm going to set aside because I get that, but it allows staff to pay any expenses, um, without board approval and then come back and get, um, oh, what do you call it? Ratification after the fact. And so I just, and that's why I'd asked Dr. Virgil, is this for just the summer? Um, and then is there any cap on the expense amount? And, um, the answer, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's not just for the summer, it's for the year and there is no cap on the expense amount.
That is correct.
So, um, just wanted to put that out there.
Board Member Beckham?
So, so just to clarify, because this goes to a question that I had asked you, but there may not be a cap, but a employee wouldn't, could not ask for fund, for an expenditure that was not already approved either in their own budget or as a, enter contract. Is that correct or not? Or is what is being implied that anybody could just say, hey, I want half a million dollars and we'd write a check for it? So, I want to have you clarify what actually happens.
No, any, any payment would have to go through the system. So, um, so an expense to a vendor, a purchase order would have had been issued, the good or service would have been received, uh, the administrator, uh, that received the good or service would have had to sign off on the invoice verifying that we had received the good or service, uh, for, for a check to be made out to a vendor to be paid.
Board Member Kirby?
Okay, so I get all that. I, that, no, it doesn't change, okay, because what he just described is the procurement process that we have been for three months minimum saying, need some help. That's what you essentially just described. So, again, I understand the need of why we, um, should do this, why it makes sense to do this, because if the procurement process and controls are working properly, there should be very little risk. But it, it begs and screams once again for the need for us to get this procurement audit done, because right now I don't believe we have all of the necessary controls in place. So it's, it's a trade-off and it's a balance, um, and I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention and really place the emphasis on the need to get the procurement audit done. And, and audit being internal controls is what I'm looking for, not an audit of what we've spent in the past, but what are our controls and are they functioning properly?
Okay. Board Member Beckham?
So, I have a question on that then. If something like this isn't approved, because this is just for warrants. If something like this isn't approved, because this is just for warrants, but we did just approve all these other contracts, correct? How do the warrants and the contracts that we just approved under the consent agenda, God, what's the word?
Mesh.
Mesh, but, you know. How is the, how is the warrants different from what we just approved? When you're looking at the practicality of making a payment for a good or service? Does that make sense? I'm trying to figure out, can the school function by not having this warrants approved?
Well, it's not that the warrant wouldn't be approved, it would be delayed. In other words, you wouldn't approve it until it was presented to you. You wouldn't ratify it after the, after the fact. So we wouldn't issue the payments until you had approved them. So what it does, it delays it. The, is there a penalty for delaying? Some vendors, some vendors have specifications that they be paid within so many days. So if you were to break one of the, you know, if you were to break one of those where a vendor charged you an interest rate if it was over 30 days or whatever their terms were, we'd have to pay that interest penalty for a late payment. But other than that, now I'm talking expenses, not payroll. You hold up payroll and that's, that's a whole nother issue, obviously, with people's paychecks, I don't, I don't, I don't think you wanna do that.
Board Member Kirby?
Yeah, I have a compromise, actually. So my, my suggestion would be that we authorize this not for a full year, but through September 30th. And to, to force some action on the procurement audit, in the procurement review. We get that going and place a priority on that, and then we can extend this until December 30th. Because I really just wanna get this procurement review started. So that would be my compromise, that we would come back and revisit this on September 30th. Or, you know, September 1st in anticipation of September 30th.
I have a question for the next C F. Dr. Virgil, how do you see the procurement changing from what we do right now, from, to when we have a, and I'm serious about wanting to understand this, to then if we have a procurement audit? What's changing?
Well, I know we have gone out and received quotes, and I'd have to ask Ms. Dino to help me out as far as where we're at with those quotes. I have seen them, I know that some quotes have been sent for review to Ms. Marshall as far as where we're at on that. I know she has made a lot of changes in the, in the purchasing department as far as getting us a system that is working of review going forward. So having a leader in the purchasing department was a big part of the problems prior to hiring a director of purchasing. We had no leadership in the purchasing department. And now that we do, a lot of things are being corrected. So do you have, the, the quotes on where we're at, and we got those. Give us an update on.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Krieger, Sandra. I guess to give you a quick update, we went out for quotes. We had to do it twice. The first time around, our scope of work was very limited, and the responses, we only had two responses. We decided to revise the scope of work based on recommendations from Ms. Michelle Marshall. And, and then again, we went out for quotes, we only, we only received two again. Now the quotes are very different. We have one for HR department only, that's from Gallagher, and the cost is very high. So at first we got, their quote was $25,000, now it's at $170,000 approximately. The other quote is from Clifton Larson Allen, which is an internal auditing firm, and they are willing to do both procurement and HR. Their fees are significantly lower, only about $5,000 each, for each department. Therefore, we are planning to meet with these firms, and Michelle will be involved, Dr. Virgil, and we'll discuss the scope of work and provide clarification. Because they, it's very hard for me to tell them exactly what we are trying to accomplish, and without that, it's also very difficult for them to provide us with a more accurate quote and scope of services.
Any more questions?
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. It's a little different from what I was looking for, but I think, I'm not at all opposed to making this a, you know, a shorter term approval. I just really was trying to understand, do we stop doing business if we don't have the ability to do warrants in between board meetings? I was really looking for that answer.
No, we don't stop doing business, but we're, we're very likely to incur costs.
Costs, because of late fees.
And incur cost and/or alienate some vendors.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll chime in. I'm, I mean, I respect what Board Member Kirby is trying to accomplish and the conversation, dialogue, and what we're really trying to do. I'm just struggling to see how limiting this is a solution to that problem necessarily. I mean, this is common practice, I would certainly assume. There's obviously reasons why that's common practice. And I don't wanna create more bureaucratic hoops and difficulties and confusion trying to solve a much bigger problem. But if by limiting it to a certain date, we, we force a conversation that's valuable, I, that's okay? Board Member Kirby? That's what my compromise is, is it's, I'm trying to create a sense of urgency, for, to be honest. Because we just haven't had one. And I get it, it's, it's new personnel, interim personnel, but we, we are, we have proven that we have exposure. And so, yes, it may be the common way to do business, and we do it like this all the time, but we are exposed. And so I'm not comfortable just signing up for another year of exposure with very little movement on the procurement review. So that's, that's, that's the compromise.
Dr. Krieger, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, President Perleberg, members of the board, we accept that challenge, and we will move forward with that. I believe, one of the, one of the reasons for this kind of request has become more popular in school districts is partly because of so much technology and online, and payments are made faster, you know, you don't, you don't have to request a check and wait a couple of weeks for it to come in, and then send it out and all of that. But also because, like us, we have one business meeting a month, where in the past it was two, and so things got processed quicker. There would be, there would be warrants on, on every board meeting, every two weeks, so. But we, we are moving forward with finding the firm to do the audit and have the audit, and we'll be able to report on this as we get closer to the, if this is voted on to the September 30th deadline, which means the board meeting in September, we would need to come forward, which is a couple of weeks or a week before that.
And, right, and the September 30th I threw out there, I was just thinking earlier, our conversation about eight weeks to go through procurement process, I added four weeks of buffer, and I came up with 90 days. That seemed reasonable, but if it, the timing should be Thanksgiving because of board meeting schedules, we can, I'm open to that. I just, I wanna, I wanna make the other a priority, and I don't know how else to do it.
Okay.
So at this time, are you ready for a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we adopt the Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Warrants Between Board Meetings through September 30th, 2018.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. All right. So we now, we've done our consent, okay. We move on to our action items. 8A, Approval of Revision of Governing Board Policy, BEDB. Ms. Marshall, please continue.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Krieger and Mrs. Como. I've brought back policy BEDB, which is called Agenda, specifically for the board to have further discussion and possible action on the placement of public comment on the agenda. At our last discussion of this, you requested that I provide you with some examples of what other entities, mostly school districts, do. I provided as background several other districts for you to review, including Chandler, which has public comment after information, as we currently have it, but before consent and action. Paradise Valley, which has it prior to action and information. Phoenix Union, which has a first and second call to the public, the first one at the beginning, then consent and information, and then a second call and action. And Mesa, which has public comment at the end, but notes in their policy anyway, that they only do it, have public comment on the second of their two regular meetings each month. So they have one meeting, one regular meeting where there's no public comment, and a second one where there is public comment. I have also in your background the City of Scottsdale, which has public comment at the end. We did poll Corporation Commission, but it was impossible to tell how they do it, so I apologize for that. Sorry, let me pull up the policy here. And again, this one is a little unusual. Usually I have a red line with recommendations for you, but it's more of a discussion about what you would like to see. And I'm not sure you're ready to take action tonight, but this again shows, sorry, the way that we previously revised the policy to move public comment down after information, but still before you take any action, whether on consent or actual action. So that's, this is what it looks like right now, what the last changes were that we made. And you had some discussion of that, and I'll let you all talk about what you'd like to see, or if you want more information, or have any other feedback. They voted for one, we're done.
Okay, good. Excellent. Let's, let me know. All right, questions, comments? We know the question.
Do we maybe need more information?
Board Member Beckham?
I think I brought, I'm the one who brought this back up. I'm still, I liked that one of the school districts had it in two different places, and then I didn't, were you able to find out if they put a limit on the first section of comments, or how they divided it up?
You know, I don't know that information, I can find that out.
Okay, but I mean, it's just, I'm just seeing this kind of as a, as a way to compromise. We've heard from our public that it can be difficult to be at the very end, and then there's also the perception that although, when I voted on it initially, it wasn't the reason I voted, but there's a perception out there that it was moved for political reasons. So I'm, I kinda like the idea of putting it twice, because that gives people the opportunity to be here in the beginning, and then at the end, and that kind of is up to what their work schedule or, you know, dinner schedule is with their kids, gives them two options.
Can I ask a follow-up? Board Member Beckham, if you were to see it twice, would you like to see it where it is? In these, in this red line, both after student and staff recognition, and then again after information discussion, or do you have a thought about that?
You know, time, I mean, I'm constantly looking at that clock and amazed how fast the time goes. So I was, you know, it seems like if we're moving it to accommodate more people, maybe the little farther away it is, it might be positive, except for we are talking, well, I'm getting high school parents, their kids can stay home alone, so, and then elementary could come earlier. So it could be where it is, or it could be after consent agenda, or, you know, even at the very end. Was anybody's after action items at the very end?
It looks like the City of Scottsdale does that.
In these school districts.
And maybe Mesa. Mesa, I have a note that Mesa's at the, is at the end of, at least on its policy.
And I know that there's that thought, well, public comment may want to present their comment before there's action items. Because if they're discussing that action item, they get to be able to voice their opinion. But then again, if we have it in two places, that could be one of, you know, if somebody wants to, they could do that at the beginning. So I don't have a preference.
And Phoenix Union, the one that does it twice, has the second one after the consent, but before the action, so.
All right. Any other comments on this?
So, based on the lack of comments, I think you're maybe not ready to take action on a change at this time?
I, well.
I could stick a motion out there.
I mean, yeah. I will ask for a motion, I'm gonna, I, I mean, I, yes, I just wanna review again a lot of the reasons why we did move it. It, I mean, there were some valid arguments, you know, we're trying to respect staff time, those presentations for the information discussion items. Also to, to make sure our community heard those information discussion items at times. I think those were valid reasons, but I understand the challenges of how our board meetings have been going these last few months. I'm not terribly fond of just purely being reactive, vice versa, you know, both, both ways. We're in the time that we're in, and there's no ideal with this current situation, so. I, is, is there a motion on the table, Board Member Beckham?
I'll make a motion that we move, that we establish public comment, or do I say amend the current agenda by placing two public comments. One public comment after student and staff recognition, and that it be limited to 30 minutes. And then that we put a public comment after the consent agenda, between consent agenda and action item. Does, does that seem to work?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna jump in.
Okay, I was gonna say, maybe I should be asking Dr. Krieger if that works for him.
I think, one, there was discussion about public comment, making sure that was before consent, in case there was any comment. Did I hear you say that?
I said that's an option, I said it's, yeah.
That would be prior, so even the second round, to still be before consent and action items. But I, I do think it'd be very important that our board be clear, and our community would be clear on whatever restrictions we're going to have. By dividing it up, either we establish it is first come, first served, and we'll read the cards. we establish it is first come, first served, and we'll read the cards, you know, first come until thirty minutes, and then we stop, and wherever we stop it, it, I, Dr. Krikard just mentioned, there, there's always that issue. We've always limited one comment per person. One, one three minutes time per person. They don't get to come up again, they don't get to fill out another card, and I would think it'd be real important to establish that as well. If you were in round one, you don't get to be in round two.
Establish some procedures with this, right.
And, and yeah, off the top of my head, I'd be, I'd, I'd look to Ms. Marshall and Dr. Krikard for recommendations, what other?
Well, how about this? I, I'll table my motion, because then I'll have a conversation, and I will write it out, because it, it's not an urgent matter, and then I won't be sitting here devising it in, in front of everyone. How about that?
Okay. So is there any questions or an additional motion, or any issue? Are we ready to move on? Okay.
Do you want me to bring this back on the twenty-sixth?
Is there interest in bringing this back on the twenty-sixth?
Okay, we'll bring it back on the twenty-sixth.
Board Member Hartman, did you wanna make a comment, or?
Yes, I, I appreciate with Board Beckham's trying to, I think what it is, is accommodate the public comment and feedback. But after sitting here for four years, I feel as though that what we, what we've created right now is the compromise. I mean, what often happens? Two things that are important to me. One is that student-staff recognition happens early, so we don't have students sitting here longer than they need to, and then there's, and then there are teachers and staff. And then secondly, comment, allowing as many comments as possible, feasibly possible. And the challenge, what we've done is we actually moved it after, really it was information discussion was the key item. But I think strategically putting it before, before public comment, or excuse me, before consent agenda and action items makes sense. But the reason why we moved it further along, there was no intent to curtail anybody's voice. The point was that many, many, many of the comments were not fully informed. And so by putting it after the information discussion, it allowed our constituents to hear as much, as many facts as possible, which are mostly disclosed, really all disclosed through the discuss, the public, or the discussion items. So that was the strategic reason why it was moved later. I feel as though it's been working well, and so I'm very comfortable with this proposed, new proposed agenda that we've been operating with for the past several months. I haven't really received really very much negative feedback at all to it, other than people want more time, and we're trying to give them as much time as possible. We still have to limit it to three minutes per person. So I'm comfortable with where this is. So if you're, really. So if you'd like more time to think about it, then I won't propose a motion. But if you're kind of open to what that is, I would propose a motion that we kind of move forward with this agenda, proposed agenda.
Board Member Beckham?
Okay. So I don't have a problem with that, and that, because the other board members are not answering, maybe that's what it's gonna take to find out where they are. So if that's okay with me, because if, depending on how that vote goes, then I can move forward with it, or I can't.
Board Member Hartman?
Alright, so let's just see if we can move this forward. I would, let me just look at the agenda item here. Proposed to accept the approval of the revision of governing board policy BEDC as recommended this evening.
I'm not sure if that is, I'm not sure if that is accurate.
Let me just say that you could take no action and leave it as is.
Okay, but that's, that's right now.
Yes, which would be the public comment coming after information.
And, and it's true. I think Ms., I mean, Ms. Marshall's correct. We, we simply take no action.
Oh, no action.
You can do it either way.
Yeah, and I'm going to ask if, this is one question I've never really known for sure. One board member has expressed interest in bringing this back. Is, is that all we need? I mean, if, if that's the request made tonight, then we bring it back. There would be no vote to not bring this back. Is that correct?
We can bring it back as a, a request for a future item.
It can be, yeah. Okay.
Alright. Board Member Kirby?
So, to be consistent, yes, we do have, individual board members have requested an item that no one else has expressed interest in, that we discuss. So if we wanna stay consistent, then we would bring it back. However, I will make a motion to leave policy BEDB as currently stated, with no changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes four one.
Thank you.
Alright. So we will now move to action item eight B, proposed fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen expenditure budget and call for public hearing. Dr. Virgil.
Thank you, Madam President, governing board members, Dr. Krikard. We've got the fiscal year nineteen proposed budget. Key, key elements in the budget, we've discussed many of these prior, the base level increasing, seven and a half percent. It's the third year of Prop one, two, three, so that's continuing. That expires after fiscal year twenty-five, so it's good for another seven years. Current year funding, we're projecting the one point two percent decrease in student count. TEI decreased, and the DAA reduction reduced. It's actually a good reduction, because it's a reduction of a reduction. So we picked up about, I believe it was about two and a half million on that one, from the eighty-seven percent reduction to a sixty-five percent reduction. Of course, that's an estimate that we'll get the final in November. Other elements, the classroom site fund increased, and then we're in the fourth year of our fifteen percent M and O override, so that will decrease to ten percent in fiscal year twenty-one without a new successful election. And then that nineteen will be the second year of the capital override. That will expire after fiscal year twenty-two. So those are the key pieces, and like I say, we've discussed those before. New on the budget forms, new this year is going to be this. This is the average teacher's salary. That's on the budget forms, it's new, and it's also, we're going to, we're required to put that on our website. And so we'll get that posted on our website. Now, as you look at the average salary of where we're at, so eighteen, the, the, the actual number on this is eighteen, because that, that, we, we know what the average salary is for this year. But that's not going to match up any previous, as we went through the salary schedules and the, and the discussions on salary, that's not going to match any of the other numbers. And I just tell you that upfront, so you don't frustrate yourself trying to get it to match to a previous number you're given, because this is all funds, and that's designated in the instruction that include all funds. And if you remember when we were talking about salary, we limited it to M and O, and we didn't bring in all the, the federal projects and state projects and whatnot. So that's a brand-new number. We gave a ten percent, so the increase in the salary is, is a simple ten percent. And then you can see the comments, we gave the raises to all certified, we went by the Prop three oh one, which was the most liberal definition of teacher. We haven't finished our hiring for fiscal year nineteen yet, so we, you know, we're not gonna know exactly where we're at with that. And also, this doesn't include the F, the FY nineteen salary increase for professional growth, because if you remember, part of what you approved was paying for the, for the vertical moves, the professional growth. And of course, those teachers identified themselves as going to complete coursework that would let them move over a column. And historically, not all do. Some do, some don't. So we won't know until after they come back in the fall, and they've got their transcripts or whatever to, to document that they completed their coursework and got the move. Then that would, that would increase their salary, and then we'd be able to figure out what the actual increase was when we had their actual salaries. So we're still a couple of steps from figuring out what the F nine, FY nineteen teacher salaries are going to be. We've got it all budgeted for, so we budgeted as though all of them would complete their, their horizontal moves, because the day I estimate, will be the day that they all decide to do it. So we just budgeted for all of them. So we know we've got that covered. So that'll be, so that's new on the form, and then that'll also be a new that we, we'll post that on our website. Tax rates, you can see the tax rate, we've estimated a slight decrease in the, in both the primary, well, in the primary rate, and a slight increase in, in the secondary rate. But a couple things factor into that. In, in the primary tax rate, the assessed value of the district, the net assessed value, went up a little over six percent, I believe it was six point one percent. So obviously, if your net assessed value goes up, your tax rate would drop. The other reason that dropped, because that's actually, you know, thirty-six cent drop, which is pretty significant. The other reason that dropped is if you notice desegregation, if you look down to the, next to the last line, and desegregation is in the secondary tax rate. This is the first year for that, that's a change. That used to be in the primary tax rate, and they changed that, and had us drop that down into the secondary tax rate. So that came out of the primary tax rate, so that is a part of why the primary tax rate has fallen, because that point one three nine one came out of it. And it's also part of the reason why the secondary tax rate increased, because it, it got added to it. There is some controversy over that move, and there has, the, the finance director down at the county gave me a heads up that there was talk of a lawsuit. It will not impact us, so if you hear that talk, we're not gonna be impacted by it. But if you notice, everything in the secondary tax rate, with the exception of DSEG, requires a vote. DSEG does not require a vote, so your secondary tax rate has historically been something that people voted on and taxed themselves. But desegregation, as, as you know, there's no vote on that, so that's an exception to that rule of, of those things in the secondary tax rate being items that were, were done at a vote. The other issue that it impact is there's a state law that your primary tax rate is capped at a certain limit, cannot go over that. And so if you're in a school district that is up against that limit, then the state picks up the difference. And that's where, when you drop that DSEG out, then obviously, their rate drops, so they'll have to pay more, and the state won't make up that difference anymore. And so that's why there's been a threatened lawsuit on that. But because of our circumstances with our net assessed value and our relatively low tax rate, we're not gonna be impacted by it. So if you hear about something like that, you know that it's not going to impact us. And then this is the totals, and if you remember when we walked through the budget forms, when we were talking about the salary increases, and we walked through, these are the same numbers that we walked through as far as the budget expenditures and budget limit, the unrestricted capital, and the, the federal projects, that gives us our total aggregate school district budget limit. So, subject to your questions and, and comments, that's where we're at in, in the bigger picture, because we didn't change the budget. And when I say we didn't change it, we didn't add any programs. We, we didn't create new programs. We didn't eliminate any old programs. We were basically going forward with, with the same programs, we had the same budget we had, and the choice, not the choices, the changes we made are primarily the salary changes and the staffing changes, which we have already discussed and, and gone over. So there's not a lot of changes to this as far as what the district plan is, and its programs, and how we pay for them. So, subject to your questions, and then have a request that the governing board approve this proposed budget, call for a public hearing on the budget proposal and the truth in taxation, and then we'll publish the budget, and then we'll have the hearing on the twenty-sixth.
Alright, thank you, Board Member Hartman.
Thank you, Dr. Virgil. I do not have any questions on the budget. As you said, we've walked through it incrementally, so really appreciate all your thoroughness in pulling this together for us and walking us through this over the past couple months. My only question for you is on that tax rate schedule. Can you just flip over to that? Just because there's external viewers watching this. It, first a question, it's appropriate, then, for total tax rate, local tax rate, you really have to add the primary and the secondary together for a total, right?
Yes.
Okay. So then my takeaway is, I'm not going over a bunch of decimals, but roughly fiscal year eighteen versus nineteen is three point nine versus three point seven. So it actually is roughly a point oh two percent decrease.
Yes, a slight decrease, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to take that, and it's because of assessed value, of course, and other dynamics in it, but I just wanna take that away. It actually is continuing to decrease, and based on other presentations, we actually have one of the lower tax, tax rates in all of the urban communities in the state, so it continues to be very competitive, if not probably one of the lower rates statewide. Okay, thank you.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you, Dr. Virgil, and really do agree with Board Member Hartman on this. Appreciate all your, not only hard work, but the insight you've brought to us with respect to the budget and the education as well for us as board members, so thanks for that. Last time we met, we talked about how we might spend the district additional assistance, and part of that included buses, and I just want to ask if we are budgeting to purchase any new buses in the eighteen nineteen school year.
We are not budgeting for them out of capital, out of the district additional assistance. That money is unallocated, and we did not set that aside. We will be purchasing people transportation vehicles, because in the bond, in the original bond plan, six million was set aside for people transportation. This year, FY eighteen, there was approximately one point two million spent on new school buses, and we'll be coming to you for the, in that bond plan, that bond expenditure plan, I believe it was one point three seven budgeted to be spent in FY nineteen on, on people transportation vehicles. And we'll give our new director of transportation time to get his feet on the ground and take a look at his fleet. And we have, we had a preliminary set of vehicles to be replaced, and we'll give him an opportunity to take a look at that and confirm that that is the set of vehicles that we want to replace. And, and then that will come to you as a request, but that will be in- but that will be under the bond that was already planned to be spent. So I don't want to say we're not buying vehicles, because we are, but we're not buying them, we have no plan to purchase them from the district additional assistance.
Okay, thank you for that.
Dr. Krieger?
And, Dr. Virgil, that will be after the study of use and mileage, and the questions that have been asked by the board to have reviewed by the new Director of Transportation for the activity buses.
For, well, the, we can do that, we weren't going to request any out of the capital prior to that being done, if you would like to also hold off on the purchases from the bond, for the same reason, we can do that as well.
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll do that, right.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that the governing board approve the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 expenditure budget as presented, and call for a public hearing and board meeting on June 26, 2018, at 3:00 p.m. at the boardroom of Coronado High School for the purpose of adopting the fiscal year 2018-19 expenditure budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you. That moves us along to our next agenda item, future items. Do I have any additional requests for future items from board members? I have noted that we do want to bring back, when appropriate, an action plan for the site conversations, and, I mean, conversations and plans for the drug use and ATOD increase, and those conversations, and we'd like to discuss that in more detail in the future. Do I have any additional items? Board Member Beckham, did you want to bring back DIE at our next meeting? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's a different one, sorry. DIE, yeah. I think, yeah, for the auditor. Yeah, that's, we will be bringing that, that's correct, absolutely, yes. Okay, any additional, Board Member Hartman, did you, was that comment, okay? That moves us on to dates of our upcoming meetings, the board will meet here at Coronado for a regular governing board meeting on Tuesday, June 26, at 3:00 p.m. for the adoption of fiscal year 2018-19 expenditure budget, public hearing, and truth in taxation hearing. On Thursday, August 9, at 2018, at 3:00 p.m., the board will meet for a study session at the Mojave District Annex, and a regular governing board meeting will be held Tuesday, August 14, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. here at Coronado. Moves us to item 11, governing board reports, do we have any governing board reports this evening? Thank you. If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. See you all soon.